Welcome to the Sankaseth Podcast. I'm your host Amy Watson and I'm thrilled to be speaking with City Councilor Craig Sauvay today. I know he's really into metal. I know he's really into beer and I know he's really into his job, which is a little bit different in how that he's working from home as a city councillor. So we're going to hear what the inside scoop is on city council meetings. We're going to hear a little bit about food. We're going to hear a little bit about his favorite metal music. And it's gonna be a lot of fun. Stick around.
Feel so naughty having a beer before six. These days it's more like nine thirty, ten that I'm having a beer if I have a beer.
I'm so glad to be speaking with you today because it has been far too long. You're the now the Sudwest City Councillor and a local brigand as you refer to yourself, which I think really should be your title. Officially Saint-Ardenne, Petit Brugge, Point Saint Charles and Griffin Town in Montreal. But we knew each other long before that. So it's actually really fun to be recording with you again.
Yeah, this is our like, I guess it's been nine, over nine years since we've actually done media together.
Yeah.
When we were on CKUT.
The morning after show on Friday morning.
It was great. I really enjoyed that and you were an excellent colleague on that show and we had a lot of fun. So it's good. I'm happy to be on. Thanks for so much.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun, but you were talking about politics at that time. This was before you were a city councillor. This was before anybody knew that you would represent our district in the city. And I always, I love that you knew so much about what was going on. You are insider in the city. And now I feel like I get to use you again as that insider to kind of figure out what's going on now. But as this is the Sankaseth kind of podcast, Sankaseth Podcast, that is the name, we are having a beer today, no?
Well, I guess we could do that. Yeah.
What do you have handy?
Well, there are so many good local brewers in the Sudwest. We're really like just blessed to have so many amazing brewers. We have Catherine Jean, you know? We have, we have Brasso de Montreal. Here's another one. We have Saint Ambroise. Hats off to them. Here's a newer one that I really started liking. It's Mesorum Brassatorium. And they make limited edition beers. It's a great name. So it's Latin. It means like brew reaper, I guess, or brewer reaper. So open by metalheads, by the way, too, which is very cool.
We'll get back to music because I know you, you're a big metalhead.
And this is one they made to support a local music group that I'm afraid I don't know. I think Le Carabin. It's called Rosé Gris. It's lovely beer. And so all their canned, all canned beers, or you can get them with your growlers. Usually they do IPAs, double IPAs, strong beers with a lot of taste, sometimes sours. And this is a double IPA. So this is an eight point two percent. So I don't have more than one.
That's a tall can there. Okay.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, almost a pint.
So these guys are open for special hours during the shutdown right now?
Yeah, they do. Well, they always do limited productions, but they have a lovely terrace out on the south side of the canal in the Cabot Sector, the industrial sector. So hopefully when we get back to normalcy, you'll be able to enjoy their lovely terrace. But you can go and they'll announce in their Facebook or their Instagram when they have a new production that's done. And then you can line up with social distancing respected and buy your, buy your cans. And it goes pretty quickly. It's starting to get a big name in the neighborhood, actually.
Okay, so it's pretty insider and I like that it's also in your neighborhood and in your district and you're supporting local, which is super important. I also like, I actually went by there. You recommended I go check it out. It's near my place. So I did go for a, for a run down there. And I also did a little bit of research and saw that they have their kind of specially designed, what's it, what's it called? Like when you have enfin and you have the, the,
It's a tap, I guess.
Yeah, the tap. Yeah, they're like, they're especially branded designed tap by like a one guy, an artisan who makes them special for anybody who wants a particular tap. And they have, it's like the skull kind of tap?
Yeah, it's this kind of, this is the look here.
And apparently they're super careful about their branding in terms of like where they put that out because people might get like confused or freaked out. But it's, it's like metal. There's all this kind of misconception about what that, what that means. So I just think it's a really cool brand. I think it's a really cool company and I was really happy that you introduced me to it.
Oh, good. Happy to. What are you drinking today?
I am drinking another Quebec beer, La Messe en Jarre, because I'm gluten free. So I don't have as much options, as many options anymore. So, but I also wanted to support local. This is my probably favorite gluten free beer. I could go on about gluten free beers, but I'm, I'm just.
I would watch that.
I wish that I had your beer, but this is, this is quite acceptable for gluten free beers. So something.
We're opening these bad boys up. All right.
Well, you're classier than me. I'm just gonna go with the bottle.
I love the color. They have such lovely colors.
Oh, that is.
Like that sort of citrus kind of dark. It really looks like a good double IPA, right? It's, it's not translucent, you know, you can't see through it.
In the Macauslin pint glass. So you're, you're double, you're double branding right now.
Amazing, we too, also in the neighborhood.
Well, cheers.
Cheers.
The best thing I could, the whole time before this podcast, I was like, Amy, don't say bad things about gluten free beer. And it's perfectly fine when you, when you just want a beer. So I'm just gonna stop myself there and.
I've had good gluten free beer before. There definitely are. And it's only, it's only getting better and better.
I hope so. I hope so. You're, you're the optimist. I want to talk about optimistic things because we're still in COVID nineteen shutdown right now. I don't know what the situation will be when this podcast actually comes out. But I find it really interesting to kind of peek into people's lives and where you have such an inside connection with the city. I kind of wanted to know what it's like working from home right now. What's your setup? Like you're obviously not going to council meetings like you were before.
Yeah, no, almost everybody is home where we can send them home. So obviously some essential workers that are doing work in the streets, like blue collars and some other people, but even the mayor is often at home. So right now I have my office space and I'm someone who loves to be out. I'm super extroverted. There's a ton of stuff going on and I like to be everywhere. So it's weird for me to be this much home. And this office was just stocked with stuff I used to just throw in here. It was like storage room. And since this, you know, crisis occurred, you know, I needed a place to work and I organized the heck out of this room. And it's been, it was a good thing that I did for myself, to give myself a more space. And so it's really nice. And yeah, so I've, I've got this space that I'm mostly in. I also have a little, you know, an iPad in my living room as well. Sometimes I change it up depending on the lighting, depending on my feeling, depending on the internet connection. But the city council, we had just this Monday passed and we all did it virtually by Zoom. So there was nobody that was actually in the council chambers and the president, you know, she presided from home and we added extra layers of security on the Zoom because the city's IT was obviously concerned with some of the things we're reading in the media with regards to security. So we added extra layers and it was, went off really well, I think. There was a few, you know, glitches because of wifi or getting used to this technology, but it went super well. So I'm on Zoom and Google Meet and Skype all the time, all day long.
It sounds like you, you've kind of transitioned into that pretty smoothly. That's good. And I like also that you have the Valerie Plante. What?
That's one. Yeah, it's electoral poster, yeah.
You're really, I think you thought about this framing a little bit here. And are you, I think you have your, your cat there with you somewhere maybe?
Yeah, she's sleeping in the other room. Guacamole is her name.
Ah, adorable. That's pretty nice to be home with her.
Yeah, I'm super lucky.
She gets the company. Okay, so.
And I don't give her access to my bed usually. So, because I closed the room and now the bed, she's like all about the bed. She's like just cruising on the bed all day long.
How do you, how do you like that being home so much now? I mean, obviously it's a huge change, but is it a good change?
You know, I guess, I guess I'm someone who's privileged that I, you know, middle aged white male, have a job and good health. So I'm, I'm not feeling a lot of stress, you know, in that. I'm someone who indeed I love to be out and go out and I miss hugging people and I miss seeing people. But I'm all right at home right now. I'm feeling pretty good. Like I said, organize my office, organize a whole bunch of stuff at home. I learned how to cook some things. I'm terrible in the kitchen. Played more guitar than before and stuff like that. So it's different. But I'm doing all right. I'm doing all right. So.
What are you cooking? You said you're, you're not such a good cook, but I'm, I don't know. I feel like if you always appreciated my food reports on CKUT, you have to be somewhat interested in food.
Yeah, but I'm more like ostriching by those reports and you're writing on food because I'm like, I don't know what to do. Like, I'm really good at making craft dinner. I make an excellent craft dinner. But no, I definitely eat that all the time. Obviously I ate it once though and it really was good. You know, like just, I eat a lot of like raw veggies and vegan sausages. I like that too.
Are you vegan?
I'm trying to go vegan. Yeah. So I'm vegetarian for about two years now. So slowly but surely. I made my first chickpea smoothie today. So I made chickpea smoothie with natural peanut butter and cocoa powder and oat milk and banana. And it turned out really well.
Ooh, yeah. You want to add that little bit of nut, of a nutty flavor to it?
Yeah, it was sort of like, yeah, it was really filling, my goodness.
Super creamy. That's, yeah, that's really, you probably had to dilute it a little bit even to get it to blend unless you have like a really high powered blender.
I needed a lot of oat milk, but, and I've, so I'm working on my smoothie game, just starting to get there. And I cooked my first ever scrambled tofu the other day, which I'm extremely, extremely proud of.
Term race.
Something that's really easy for most people, but I'd never tried such things.
But that's the, that's kind of what's so special about this time. I feel like a lot of people are trying those, those little tricks they haven't tried before. Because maybe even if they're not vegetarian or vegan, maybe they don't want to go out and get eggs. Maybe they can't find eggs at their local grocery store. Maybe they don't want that extra bit of exposure and oh, I have this package of tofu that's been sitting around. Or the opposite, maybe they have eggs and they ran out of tofu. It feels like an opportunity to kind of branch out a little bit. So did you do that, like tofu scramble because you had the time or are you just trying to get more excited about cooking?
I would literally cook one every hundred meals maybe at home. Like I don't, I used to eat out all the time. I've only ordered out once since the beginning of this lockdown, as it were. And so just trying stuff slowly but surely. Again, I'm not very comfortable in the kitchen. I don't have all the cool equipment necessarily. But so tofu scramble, I was trying to remove the eggs out of, out of my diet to become more vegan. But I love eggs and toast and I just, I just love it. I love breakfast. And but Joe, Cafe Joe in St. Henry makes the best tofu scramble and I order it every time I go. So I said, I want to try and make a tofu scramble. And so I found some tofu and gave it a shot. And it's, it's not Cafe Joe good, but it does the trick. So I'm happy.
Yeah, I love that place. I really hope they, they all go back to normal when this opens up again. And you said you ordered, yeah, you said you ordered in just once? Where did you order in from or where did you take out from?
I did the first day in confinement, I ordered pizza from New System. I had a vegetarian pizza from New System.
That's another neighborhood classic. Like I love those guys. And they're probably actually doing really well because they're a legacy, legacy delivery company. So they already have the delivery system in place.
They have that Amada of orange cars there that circulate the neighborhood, which sometimes get me a little ticked off with their speed. You know, when I'm on the ordering end, right? But no, when I see them, we've told them a few times to chill it out a little bit there. But, but I mean, it is a neighborhood staple. I wish them good success. And indeed, we do see those orange cars rolling right now and people are ordering out. So, or locating, they're trying to help our small businesses. It's super important. I bought a few gift certificates to local small businesses when I wasn't, not in the mood necessarily to order out, but I wanted to at least encourage them somehow. And so that's another way we can do that. And there's a lot of small businesses here in the neighborhood that, that offer that option. So it's something I recommend to those who are watching right now.
Where did you get some gift certificates for? Can we name some places?
For example, Frico was one of them I got from.
Frico, oh yeah, the Acadian place, right?
Yeah. Also McLean's Pub, a place where I worked a lot.
Because you love it there. Because you worked there, right?
I worked there 11 years.
That's why we're having beer today too. When I asked you what you wanted to drink, I was like, oh, of course he's gonna have a great beer. That makes sense.
That's, it's just my, my DNA.
And they have good food too, right?
They do have really good food. And for vegetarians, they have a good Indian food. One of the co-owners is from Pakistan. And so they really know their way around Indian, Pakistani cuisine. And so there's really good chana masala, which I love. So I always order the chana masala there with a good pint of Guinness. Goes really well.
Are you gonna try to make chana masala? Because it's really not that hard.
Yes, before there was, before there was confinement measures, my girlfriend and I, we tried. And we made some pretty good chana masala. So that lasted me a little while as well. We made extra. I got an Instapot. It was my first.
Oh, good call.
Try so far. I don't know. We made chili too once. And I'll, and I'll try again. I'm still, again, I'm still getting my, my nerves up to try different things in the kitchen. But it's a really useful, it's really useful equipment.
Okay, so are you up for a little lightning round?
Sure. Let's do, let's do the lightning round.
Okay, so just don't think about it. Get a sip there. Yeah, I'm not even letting you drink. Yeah. Get a, get a big sip there. You're probably like, where is she going with this? How is this possibly going to go well? No, it'll be fine. So don't think about the answers. Just, just say what comes to your mind. What was your favorite food growing up?
Oh, my parents used to make really good beef fondue.
Oh, yeah.
So like oil, you know, oil beef fondue. And that was my special meal on my birthday.
And where are you from?
I'm from the West Island of Montreal.
Okay.
It's not, it's not like a local thing there that I know of, but it's just somehow I fell in love with it as a kid. I liked to know dipping and I liked little sauces. And that was my, that was my number one favorite food when I was a kid.
Have you made it yourself?
Never.
Have you made a vegetarian version or something that you dip things in?
I have not, but you were giving me a good idea. I hadn't even thought about it. You see, I didn't even think about food that much.
Well, I think about it all the time. So that's what I'm going to prompt you on. So when we get out of this confinement, what's the first meal you're gonna have?
Oh goodness, might just go for a straight old fashioned poutine, eh?
From where?
Where, you know, a good old green spot poutine.
Ah, yeah, yeah, that's a good one.
I love a good green spot poutine. Or I love the tequila bar makes really good burritos. Also tacos fritta. I love that place up in the neighborhood. So many good places. Caramella and the point. I love that spot too. Or you know, good old fashioned veggie burger somewhere. Who knows? McLean's Pub for a chana masala probably would be really high on that list.
Yeah. So are you more sweet or salty?
I'm salty for sure.
Yeah.
So I like, I like the savory food. I like a good meal. But once in a while, you know, some ice cream doesn't hurt either.
Definitely.
Trying to keep that down, you know, in the confinement, not as much moving around.
Yeah, exactly. Favorite, favorite music? I know that's pretty general, but just whatever comes to mind.
Oh goodness, what, mean like artist or how, I can't even begin.
Well, I think metal is a genre, right? Well, Zoom won't kick us off after forty minutes because we're just two people, but we'll try to rein it in. Okay, what, what's your, what have you been listening to? What's the first song that, that most recently you've been listening to?
Um, a few things, I guess, because I can't, just one thing was not impossible, is not possible for me. I discovered a new band called Micro Music. They're from Poland and they're really good. Meek old music, I guess. Blonde Redhead, my friend Zaleen posted something about Blonde Redhead and I started discovering them and they're amazing. The new Caribou album's really good. And some early first, I guess, wave of death metal. I got more time to play guitar because the weekends are free now. So I plugged in the guitar and I tuned it down to C standard. I started messing around with some of those old classic death metal tunes and that really prompted me to go down a rabbit hole and start rediscovering some of the best of the late eighties, early nineties death metal scenes. So, so much. That's really where I've been these days.
What's your tune? Like what's your, what are you really good at playing right now?
Um, well, tunes in sea that I've been learning, there's a band called Incantation and I learned the first song off the first album was called Golgotha, which I really like. And it's, it's a fun, good old fashioned death metal song. And corporeal jigsaw quandary by Carcass also in sea. And I forget the name, but it's been a really fun inflame song off the Horrible album in sea. So I was just, I was sort of like Googling what good death metal in sea or what metal in sea? Because it's kind of low on the guitar. It's really tuning the guitar down four semitones. And there's not too much there. So I'm just sort of jumping from bands that play in sea at the moment.
Yeah, that sounds great. That sounds like.
Oh, great tunes, Sauvay. Like what is you talking about?
Well, no, now I want to hear them all. I'm gonna put up links to them in the, in the podcast notes. I'm gonna have to look these up and listen to them because yeah, obviously.
Corporeal Jigsaw Quandary by Carcass is a classic death metal song.
You're gonna have to spell that one for me probably. Just text me later and I'll, I'll put it up. I know the food stuff. You know the music stuff. But I really actually wanted to know, you talked about the, the council meetings and, and using Zoom and everything like that. Like what's a day like for you now? Like are you just sitting at home in meetings all day or do you get out or?
It's a lot of meetings still, a lot. You know, the first week was a little weird. It really slowed down because we weren't, we weren't closing down here. And we just said, we're trying to get our like repairs, like what are we gonna do really? But now it's really ramped up again because we're back in planning for the next steps, of course. And just general administration of our boroughs and, and the city. So yeah, eight thirty or nine in the morning, meeting starts on Zoom, Google Meet or Skype. Also on with the STM, obviously there's a lot of work there. It goes on and on. And sometimes lunch meetings and I usually finish at around six or so.
Wow, do you have time to even stand up and get food and breathe?
I have different strategies, right? Sometimes I change rooms, which is fun. Or, or I'll just put it on my phone and turn the camera off and mute. And so I'll be able to walk around my apartment a little bit and.
Is that allowed? Do you get in trouble for that though?
As long as I'm not making noise, right? That's the whole etiquette of operating with this teleconferencing systems, right? Is a, is a big thing, like always put your phone on mute. You know, video is probably, you know, if everybody's doing it, you do it. But if nobody's on it, you can turn your camera off. Be respectful. Try to make sure your wifi is good. Make sure you have a good connection. Chatting on the sidebar is always useful instead of always just jumping in. I think, and I'm seeing everybody is getting a little bit better at it, you know, even those who are not so technologically, you know, you know, able or used to technology. People are really starting to get used to these technologies fast. So I'm noticing even the quality of the teleconferencing is getting better in that regard. But so those, those are the days. And then the phone calls at night too, and the emails at night because it is the tough questions too. And if I'm in meetings, I'm not necessarily always doing emails at the same time. So that goes on sometimes late and I try to get a run or a walk in usually after six thirty. And that's where I try to run a different part of the, the district every time to go see what's happening and see what, see what the ground looks like. But it's super quiet at six thirty at night. There's not a lot of people out. So. But it's a good way just to get my eyes on the ground as well.
Do you feel like the city council can be as effective as before this way or maybe more effective? Because you can't really talk over other people the same way you could in a council meeting. You have to wait a little bit more. Is it, is it efficient? Like what's that part like to you?
I think it, you know, I think, I think it worked pretty well. I think it worked pretty well, the experience we just had. I mean, again, you know, the, the sort of, the bugs of teleconferencing, like the wifi, the clips. Or the people that forget to mute or technological failures that might happen of other sorts, you know?
Have there been blunders? Have there been mistakes where you're just like, oh, that guy or that girl?
Yeah, at a few conferences, there's been a couple of funny things where people are like saying, having a second conversation when they think they're on mute, but they're not and they're saying certain things they shouldn't be.
Oh, it's like high school when you're passing notes and you get caught by the teacher.
Yeah, it's funny, but you know, like you understand, but you try to be understanding of everybody. But it works pretty well. I think this may be calling into question our parliamentary systems already, right? You know, maybe there'll be parliamentary reform on the table in some countries, maybe our own country, maybe at the National Assembly, maybe at city council. I like personal meetings. I like being able to see people and read their body language as well. I think it's super important. It's not necessarily as good on Zoom. And people again, hide the cameras, you know, turn it off or turn off, turn off mute. You don't know if they're really sitting there all the time.
Yeah.
Participating. So maybe there's ways we can improve for sure, but it's working pretty well so far. Not ideal, but it's working pretty well.
Can, can I ask you who you're gonna hug of all your colleagues first? Like who do you miss the most?
First one I see.
It doesn't matter who it is. Just jump like on whoever's there.
I mean, yeah, you know, I, I, I love my colleagues and it's good to see them. So, you know, and my friends too, like I'm just, I'm really missing everybody for real. But at least we do have this technology. We're lucky. We're not a hundred years ago. We're able to talk on the phone, see each other live. So we're kind of fortunate in that way. And I've run into people on the street during the, during my little outings and it's funny. You keep a distance. We're like, hey, how you doing? Good to see you. All right. Take him well. Okay, cool. You want to give a hug? Kind of necessarily, but it's still good to see somebody, you know?
Yeah. Oh gosh, yeah, definitely. And I feel like neighborhoods get a lot smaller because of this. I don't know if you've had this experience, but like I'll be walking around my area and I'll see a neighbor or see a friend that I know who lives in the, in the area and it becomes so much more exciting. And it feels like, oh, we're really in this together. Because I don't really leave my neighborhood. Like those are the only people I'm really gonna see. And they become your world. I don't know if you have that feeling or if there's anything different about like being a city councillor and walking around, but I don't know if it's different.
For sure, yeah. I love, I love knowing people and I love, I love getting to know people. And so there's a lot of people in the hoods that I represent that I know and.
And they recognize you and you, and you, you can say hello?
For sure. Yeah, I know. People say hi to the street all the time. I love it. I love when people say hi to the street. I'm all about that. I'm like the small, I like, I love the big cities, but I'm a small village kind of guy too at the same time. Which is the best part about the Sudwest because you know, the point and Burgundy and, and Griffin Town and St. Henry and Villa Mar, we, we have these local type communities. So. I mean, it's nice to see the, you know, the people that work at the Deppener up the street. It's nice to see the people in the restaurants and it's, I miss, I miss the ones that are closed. Can't wait to go and see them all. But there's so many places in the hood here, you know, once it's out, I, you know, my cat's gonna be upset. My cat's gonna give me attitude because I'm gonna be out all the time. Places I love in the neighborhood too.
Yeah, I, I, I.
What about you? Where are you going?
Oh gosh, where am I going? I think I just wanted like bike everywhere. I just want to stop off at all my places and like up to Jean-Talon Market. I want to see, I want to see the guy at Leopoldo who's like really curmudgeonly, but also really lovely. And just like give him a big hug. And he's gonna be like, what are you doing? Please don't touch me. Social distancing is over, but still awkward. And then I just want to just like bike down and stop at every restaurant I've ever written about and be like, you don't know me, but I'm a huge fan and I'm so happy to still be here. That's, that's really gonna be my day. I could spend, I could probably spend a couple of days doing that. I don't know if you're excited about like getting back.
I'm feeling that. I'm feeling that vibe.
I don't know if you're excited about like getting back to, to work the same way, but I know it's really difficult in, in, in our neighborhood. We're both in this, in the Sudwest. And it's a, it's a neighborhood where there are a lot of low income housing. There's a lot of people that are having a harder time than us. And is it different because you don't have the same interaction with, with people that, that you would have before? Or maybe because you're walking around more, you, you, you see more like what, what aren't you seeing and what are you seeing in the neighborhood?
Well, first, you know, for politicians, there's the weekend and the evening events that are very frequent. You know, so it's rare that I have a full weekend day off. Like it's a very rare thing. And being done, you know, your day at work at six o'clock is really rare as well. Because you're always going to different things. So I really love going to those community events. Sometimes they're like, you know, galas to say thank you to the local volunteers. Sometimes they're book launches. Sometimes they're community, like community consultations. Sometimes they're, you know, during Christmas, there's a slew of parties, Saint Jean, Canada Day as well. So you just see so many people.
Saint Jean. What are we gonna do for Saint Jean this year?
Now the events are canceled. All the big events are canceled. We lost the Folk Fest in the Sudwest. I love the Folk Fest.
I know, but you can't cancel. And yeah, you can cancel a festival. You can cancel a Folk Fest and it's, and it's very sad, but you can't cancel Saint Jean, just like the day itself, the day will happen. And people will celebrate. Do you think we'll be out on our, on our balconies all singing Jean-Luc together or what?
That's a good idea. That's a good idea. I'm lucky. There's other, I live in an old sort of six flex. And like we all have balconies out toward the back and in my area, there's, everybody has a balcony. So sometimes you can interact, you know, across the yard via the balcony. So hopefully there's some good balcony parties for all those festivities, you know, but yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss all those events, you know, and that's, and as a politician, you know, it's, it's an amazing opportunity. People talk to you and they bring you their problems. And even if it's about a book launch, people come, by the way, there's a street lamp on my street that's been broken for the last six months. Like can you, you know, and so, but you just hear so much. You just get all this information. So going to those events is like super rewarding to help you do your job better. So now it's more Facebook and more, you know, messaging and people are messaging me a lot and, and phone calls and stuff like that. Trying to keep in touch with the new means we have.
Yeah, I, I just wonder like what communities are, are getting missed a little bit more right now? You know, what's, what's flying under the radar? What, what hasn't adapted as quickly? It's like when you say like, oh, you're, you got onto Zoom. It's like, that's really impressive. Because I know like other big institutions have, aren't, they weren't already making that transition or they weren't that flexible or they didn't have the money or the infrastructure or the, the employees to make it happen. So it's super impressive and, and great that you have been able to do that. And I just wonder like how much more is gonna come? Like how much more technology and how fast, how quickly can we get it in place to make sure that, you know, groups of people don't fall through the cracks?
Well, that was sort of what you're saying is, is there's two things there. There's the potential for amazing innovations.
Yeah.
During this period, because we're pushed, right? Necessity being the mother of invention. But there is the, you know, inequalities that we live are, you know, brought to the fore and realizing how shattering they are at this point, you know? Whether it's like you're mentioning people who may not have the money for, they might not have, they might not have the technology. They might not have internet in this neighborhood. People that don't have resources, that don't have networks, like, you know, I'm again, privileged person. I have a good network of people. If something ever happens to me, at least I have people to rely on. And not everybody has the same networks, you know? So that's where we've noticed an amazing amount of work done by social groups and volunteers on the, on the grounds. That's a lot of the action that's happening right now as a city is trying to support the social group. Uh, and volunteers on the, on the grounds. That's a lot of the action that's happening right now as a city, is trying to support the social groups with the delivery of food. With information, checking up on people. Uh, we, we do hear a lot about, uh, what's happening in, in our seniors residence, which is extremely worrying and scandalous. There's, there's a lot of seniors also that are sort of in their homes, maybe isolated, maybe worried, uh, maybe scared. So there, there's that kind of communication that's, that's happening here with the social groups. They're trying to do their best. So hopefully we can advance and learn from this as a society as well, right? I mean, uh, it's all these inequalities that are, are brought to the fore and all these, all these problems that we're seeing are highlighted. And hopefully there'll be concrete structural action as a result of that, you know? That's the one thing that I'm hopeful about. It could be back to normal, which would be a bad scenario. Back to normal would suck. It can't be back to normal. It has to be better, much better. Opportunity, you know, everybody's in debt, you know? Uh, the governments across the world are in debt, uh, so time to think outside of the box, hopefully, right?
Yeah, I hope so.
That was a bit of a rant, sorry. On my brain.
I like your rant. I actually, I, so I remember from CKUT and how, how early in the morning were we in there? Like six o'clock, seven o'clock? I think we started recording at seven. And you were always so awake and like so on point and you could just, like, the way I can talk about food and I can just go forever. It's like you, you talk about politics, but not in the way that you stereotypically think a politician would talk about politics where I believe half the things that are, that are coming out of their mouth. It's like, oh, everything he's saying makes sense. That was the first time I actually cared about municipal politics. So I'm, I'm, I'm really happy that, um, that you're part of this technological transition. And that you're, you've taken the time to, to speak to me and hopefully lots of listeners today and.
That was really, that's really nice of you to say too. And we, we made a great team. That was a really good show. I'm gonna toot our horn. You know, with, uh, with Josh and Ken too, like what a team we had.
Oh, you cut out there.
Really proud of you. Come over to different bases with all the different, different expertise and stuff like that. And, uh, it was, it was a lot of fun. We, we should do it again or open a magazine or something.
Yeah, that was, uh, McGill Campus, uh, Campus Radio, CKUT. They, they let anybody on the mics there. God love them. They give you your break.
Give us our big break. We give us our big break.
Yeah, so I, I, I just wanted to give you an opportunity if there's anything else you wanted to mention. Food or music or, or whatever and, and otherwise I will, I would just say thanks.
Well, just, uh, you know, everybody stay safe. Everybody, uh. We, we don't know where we're going, none of us. And like you said, Amy, this might, when you bring this up, when you publish this, might be a few weeks from now. It's Earth Day today. Happy Earth Day, everybody.
Happy Earth Day.
Let's hope that is an occasion too, that we can think about reorganizing our economy to help take care of each other and the planet. And, uh, you know, take care of each other, take care of your neighbors, uh, take care of yourselves. Any, you know, if you're worried, that's okay. If you're feeling productive, that's okay. If you wanna brag about all the time you're well spending, that's okay. If you're just chilling out and, and just trying to deal, that's okay. Uh, we're all dealing with this differently and it's, uh, and, you know. But the most important thing is that we, we try to help each other out on the way out so that things, uh, improve. And that we don't leave people behind, uh, as we move forward throughout this. So that's where, that's where I'm thinking. So talk to your neighbor, call your folks, call your friends, call your aunts and uncles. Keep in touch.
Well, I'm really glad that we could keep in touch and, and I appreciate your time today. Thank you so much, Greg.
You rock. Thank you so much.